Ready, we can make it happen. Nice, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee. The whole meeting today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. It's 6:45 PM. Not much on our agenda. Of course, we did not meet yesterday in observance of Martin Luther King Day. So, uh, thank you all for being here. Let's start on the operational side. Is there anything on our operational agenda this evening that any particular council member has any questions about? Obviously, we're gonna go through the receipt of bids for our capital improvement projects. And Elizabeth Bergman from Baker Tilly is here. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And Jason will pipe in, I'm sure. Other than that, it looks like we've got one first reading and a couple seconds and a couple finals. So, anybody have any questions on those items other than our bonds? Okay, let's move to the consent agenda. Any particular item any council member would like to discuss at this time? Very robust agenda again. Eight whole items. We got a pair of bills, so don't ask about that. Yes, Jerry?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. On item D, on the downtown landscape plan, uh, my question is, is do we have a similar plan for the library?
Brian or Jeff, do you wanna handle the library one?
Library and-
I have a part of it and probably turn it over to Jillian and Kim, who have been working in concert on a plan, but Public Works staff will still, and also our contractually, will will out, will manage in the parking lots and phase field and stuff like that, but actually around the structure, um, the two structures, I'm gonna turn that over to Kim and Jillian, because I know that they've been working with the contractor last year, and I don't know if they've been continuing doing that in this coming year, as far as the maintenance goes.
Was that a two-year contract with?
No, it was a one-year contract initially, so, um, we've not, um, worked on this currently, but we will be doing so very soon, now that we're getting into the spring season.
So, we initially had work done on the learning campus, cleanup, new plantings, things like that. Jillian and I, Jillian and I went in together on, uh, the proposal with the contractor, but there was no long-term maintenance, um, plan added to that. So, if that's what you're referring to, Jerry.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, I think that's something that-
I knew that the one-time fix-up, you know, they did a nice job doing that, but then there was no maintenance to follow on.
Normally, um, it is contracted by someone through Public Works, um, to clean up and maintain. But I know over the years, it has gotten more vast as far as, uh, what they need to clean up, the plantings, things like that. It's not just weeding here and there, but areas had become really overgrown and neglected, and so we did the one-time overhaul, I guess, of the whole learning campus. So now, we'll work with Brian to figure out, you know, what we can do moving forward, what's gonna be covered by, uh, Public Works Parks Maintenance, and then what we can work on and, and cover together.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts on our consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Regarding item B, um, will we have an opportunity tonight to get additional information? I read in the packet, for example, that perhaps there might be a migration on some boards and commissions, including, I think, Chamber and perhaps some other things, but I don't know if that's like a long-term plan or an evolution or, you know, how that might unfold. So, just interested, somewhere along the way of getting a little bit of background's a great opportunity for our community.
I can probably, um, I can indicate to you that as, as we begin to, um, I'd say mature, Jeff into the position and the boards and commissions that I sit on, some of those will naturally, um, evolve. Some are listed as city administrator or mayor, so those will still, um, be filled that way, but, um, we'll be working with the boards, uh, that I sit on, uh, if there's an opportunity to have Jeff also co-sit on those or have him begin to share that opportunity. We'll be doing that. And that, I mean, that's gonna, uh, as we have like the mayor administrators meeting, the assistants have come to those on occasion. They, that's been kind of a hit or miss, um, because there haven't been that many assistants that have been part of that over the years. So, um, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be a, um, a moving target, if I can say it that way, but, um, that's certainly the, that's certainly the goal, is to begin to try to phase that in for the experience necessary.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other thoughts on consent? I'd like to entertain a motion that our consent agenda stay as set for this me, this evening's meeting. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Items to be added by mayor and council. Let's do a couple of minutes on our fifth ward eligible applicant documentation, or at least what the policy or procedure may be from now, next Tuesday, 5 o'clock here.
That's correct, Your Honor. So, would you like me to?
Yeah, please.
So, in front of you is, um, the little binder that Michelle put together. Uh, we had three applicants, um, who have expressed interest in being the appointed fifth ward alderman. Um, and we have given you the packet with the information they've supplied to us. Um, and Chris can go over the, uh, the way that the ordinance reads, uh, and what our plan would be. Our plan would be to have all three of the applicants be invited to next, uh, Tuesday's 5 o'clock meeting, uh, very brief meeting. Each would be allowed five minutes to make a presentation. If the council were to decide it wants to choose that person that night, after any discussion, they would want, they have that option. Also, if we believe that we need more time, as we outlined in our memo a couple weeks ago, um, we put aside both nights, the 24th and the 31st, for you to, uh, be able to think about it, uh, for a week and make that decision on the 31st if you did not want to make it on the 24th. So, we would expect that, uh, we'll send a letter in the morning to the three candidates. Um, one, one's here this evening, so we won't need to send a letter. Uh, I'm sorry, already sent, we sent that this afternoon, to the candidates, offering them the opportunity to be here next week. We did not anticipate that it would be a Q and A, um, unless the council chooses to do that. And, um, we kind of expected that, frankly, Your Honor, that, um, after the 24th, you might wanna take some time to, to think and, and then deliberate and come back on the 31st and make that final decision, um, unless it's apparent to all of you that you wanna do it that evening. So, we've left that up to you. I don't know if Chris wants to add anything at all.
I think you summarized it well, Decker. I, I think the one thing that I just wanted to clarify is, you know, we're, uh, very specific procedure under Iowa code, and then some additional, um, clarification on certain issues in our city code, but the main thing is the, at the last meeting, there was a resolution directing staff to publish a notice of council's intent to appoint, which is the, the primarily, it's the statutorily required notice, and in that notice, we gave the two dates, and that notice has to be published between four and 20 days before the date of appointment. So, the, the notice covered both the 24th and the 31st. We've made sure that the publication date would cover your ability to actually make the appointment on, on either date. Both dates were in the notice, so really, it, it provides council the flexibility to, to hear from the, the applicants on the 24th and then to either decide on that night or to decide on the 31st.
When is the last day to make the decision? We gotta do it on the 31st?
You have to do it, I, I think we published on the 11th.
Correct.
So, it would have to be tw- 20, yeah, 20 days from that date, so it would have to be on the 31st. We could republish if we had to.
And then push.
And then push it. I mean, you start getting into-
I don't know that we'll have to.
A difficulty of, um, yeah, but that, that would be an option. The main thing is that you have to publish notice between four and 20 days before the date of appointment.
And we covered both the 24th and 31st, and the 31st is on day 20.
That's right.
All right, makes sense. Any questions on that, where we're headed next? Okay. Any other items to be added by council?
In, in, uh, for Lisa's benefit, uh, we put the packet in your slot. If you're gonna be back over the weekend, we can email you the packet as well.
Oh, and it's been emailed to you as well.
Oh, me? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be back Sunday, so.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order this evening before we take a quick break and start again in five? All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello, Luke.
Can I get a second?
Second.
There we have it, we are adjourned.
Can I get an amen?
Amen!
Don't want to second anything.
I thought me-
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Thank you all for joining us now. If you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Pastor Ed Henning, Heading, excuse me, of Pleasant View Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new year. We thank you for a new, fresh start, new vision, and we just pray for these members here that represent our city. Thank you for their willingness to serve. Thank you for their oversight on all the services of our community, for churches, businesses, schools, residents as well. We pray you'll give them wisdom. We pray you'll lead them as they go, help them to seek wisdom from you, and help them always remember that they're serving you and serving, uh, those that are the constituents of this community. So, we pray your blessing upon them in this meeting. We pray and ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ed. Always a pleasure to see you, my friend. Enjoy your evening. All right, we do have a proclamation tonight. This is mentoring month, and I have a great opportunity to welcome Big Sister Nola Neely and her little sister Monique from the Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley. They're in attendance tonight. I'll meet you guys in the center here where we practice, and we're gonna deliver a proclamation. Welcome, ladies, we're glad that you're here. Nola? Monique? All right. I have a proclamation from the office of the mayor's office here in Bettendorf. Whereas everybody remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend, who broadened our horizons or brought purpose to our lives. And whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success. And whereas research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration, and delinquent behavior, and are more likely to volunteer regularly in their community. And whereas there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want positive role models in their lives, and our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to become mentors. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs filled the gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually, to ensure that physical distancing does not mean social disconnection. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as mentoring month in our community, and I encourage all citizens, business, public, and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley.
Here.
Here.
So, thank you very much for being here. We have a mentor and a mentee, I take it. Would you like to say a few words to the folks here?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you from the Big Brothers Big Sister program. Me and Monique's been, um, big and little for about, about seven years now. I had her since she was a little kid. So now she's in eighth grade at your middle school here in Bettendorf, and it's been really rewarding to me too, um, being able to be a mentor for Monique. Both of us, I think, over the years, we have got close and just want the best for her. And so, like I said, it's thank you for recognizing the mentoring.
Fantastic, thanks, your, your gift of time. Monique, what do you think about this whole thing?
Um, I'm glad my parents got me involved in this program at such a young age to really grow up around there and realize how much of a great person she is, and, um, she's really supportive and positive, and she's a good role model.
Fantastic. Thank you both. What do you think, Monique? Any one day you'd be a big sister? Come on over here, we'll get a picture. Smile for the camera. Wherever you wanna be.
It's now's one, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
There you go. You're welcome. All right, Lisa. We have a special guest, Major Robert Oliver, the Quad Cities Coordinator of the Salvation Army is here with us tonight, and is Patty here? Patty Mickelson? Okay, she's a volunteer coordinator. They came up with a pretty cool idea this year, except I couldn't help them participate, so- No, you're out of town. We've got some cool stuff, thanks to Lisa Brown, who is a bell ringer for us. Major Bob, tell us what we did and how great Lisa did.
Sure, sure. Honorable, Honorable Mayor Gallagher, city council members and staff, it's my pleasure to be here, and thank you for letting me stand here, uh, before you, and as they say before I speak, let me say something. The, uh, on any given night, the Salvation Army provides, uh, housing, support, or shelter for, uh, 250-some men, women, and children in the Quad Cities, and, and food for them. Uh, and we're in the business of providing hope, but we couldn't do it without the businesses and people of the Bettendorf area, the people of Bettendorf. Uh, they've been a great support, uh, to us, uh, both at Christmas time and throughout the year. Uh, businesses such as Hy-Vee in Devil's Glen, uh, they have been our top bell-ringing location again this year, raising over $20,000 at their location, uh, through our kettles. Uh, businesses such as Quad City Performance, who took on one of our angel trees and raised, collected almost 200 toys to make Children's Day bright on Christmas morning. Uh, and, uh, businesses such as Acentra, uh, which is a great partner in your community, and, uh, they partnered with us again this year with their Ride 50 program to raise money and awareness about Salvation Army. They, at their own cost, came and did a video, uh, series of videos about our different programs in the area and posted that on their Facebook page, and if you haven't seen it yet, you can find out what we're doing, uh, in all of the Quad Cities and in Clinton and Muscatine, and our Adult Rehabilitation Centers. So, businesses such as that. Businesses such as K&amp;K Hardware, who partner with like Asbury United Methodist Church for many, many years to, on a total volunteer basis, raise money at the kettle time. So, we, we're so grateful to the people and businesses of, uh, Bettendorf who have helped us at Christmas and throughout the time. So, this year, our advisory board laid down the challenge to mayors across the greater Quad Cities to have a Battle of the Bells on December 10th. Now, we probably started too late in the game, and we only got three takers to that, only three cities participated in that, but in just two short hours on December 10th, uh, we raised over $500 to help programs and services of the Salvation Army. I think we've got our work cut out for us next year. We're gonna have more participation and more competition, but I'm really pleased to say that I, I did go out and visit, uh, Lisa on her kettle there at the Hy-Vee in, in Devil's Glen, and she was doing it enthusiastically and with a lot of joy and was very successful. Uh, the, the city of Bettendorf raised $248.04, almost half of what we raised, uh, in those two hours, and so we're very grateful. We're happy to present the certificate, uh, awarded to the city of Bettendorf for first place in the first 2022 Quad Cities Mayoral Battle of the Bells, and present that to you, and then also a traveling trophy.
We go, Lisa, we go!
That, uh, hopefully you can keep this from year to year.
Oh, yeah.
I understand you have a, uh, a case of traveling trophies in your office.
They don't travel. Once we get them, they don't travel.
Yeah, yeah.
We like to work hard around here. We like to win.
So, we're really happy and appreciate the support of Bettendorf and the mayor's office.
Thank you very much. Stop over here, we'll get a photo.
Lisa, smile.
We're gonna get you, Lisa.
All right, here we go. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Very good.
Major, while you're here, I heard that there's a shortage too on what the goal and the need was in the community, and that there was still an opportunity through a, a certain point, I don't know if that's passed, but can people still donate, and if so, how?
I do appreciate you asking, yeah. So, we had a, uh, actual kettle match challenge, uh, with Vonmar and another company on the last three days before Christmas. Uh, as you know, our kettles, uh, come in on Christmas Eve, and that happened to be the blizzard and the two frigid days of, and, and the, we just couldn't get bell ringers out, or we couldn't get shoppers to give, and we fell $30,000 behind just on the kettles on those three days from what we did last year. Uh, our campaign itself, the love beyond Christmas goes on through January 31st, and we are still accepting checks and online donations. Uh, our website is saquadcities.org, uh, or they can mail it to our office at 100 Kirkwood Boulevard in Davenport, uh, drop off a check, or I can come and pick it up, whatever, but, uh, we're hopeful that we'll, we'll come close to making overall, overall goal, because what we raise at Christmas, uh, supports what we do all year round, 365 days of the year.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, thanks for asking, Scott.
Thank you, Major Bob. Appreciate you being here. Your agenda? Yeah. Tell them, Joe, I got a couple minutes. Looks like the winner won an all-expense-paid trip to Florida.
All expenses paid by her, evidently.
I didn't say by whom. All right. Public requests of council, if there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, of which there are none, you can approach the podium in the back, please state your name and address, we'd like to hear from you. Try to limit your comments to two minutes if you can, please try not to be repetitive. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard? Skip? Welcome back.
I wonder if you guys realize that, uh, Dick is gonna pay your vacation, or everybody's gonna get a vacation on Decker.
We didn't know that. Have you checked with Decker on that?
No, no, he said it was all right. Uh, the thing I was wondering is, are they still gonna go through with the plans? That civic center's going over like a, like a gangbuster. It has really gone over big, but when the traffic comes from the, from the, uh, trying to think, the Quick Star right there on, on State Street, it comes down like a bat out of heaven. I mean, it comes down so fast. Is there any way you can slow that down? It's almost like a tag team, get out of the way, here I come. They don't wanna slow down.
On State Street?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement.
And then I was wondering if the taking care of the city parks this year is still under, undergoing?
Well, I think we're gonna do it. Are you volunteering?
Sure.
Don't worry, we'll take care of the city parks.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, but I have problems, you know? I, I just can't do it. If I could do it, I'd go back to work.
I hear you. We wish you the best.
But, um, other than taking care of them problems, now the, the, the group you have here is underway, it's a big group here, they're a fantastic group, and this guy, um, Mark Hunt, have you still found out what they're gonna do with that property by Aldi's in Bettendorf?
Is he one of the Mr. Wonderful's? Before he speaks, I just wanna make sure I'm taking notes. Mark, are you thinking, uh, Skip, of the empty lot by the Aldi's there?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark Hunt, our community development director, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, I think I can add a, a little bit of information. I don't, I don't have a ton of information, but I do have, um, some kind of tire-kicking by the, the current owner, um, which is the same owner that, that's, that leased the land to Aldi for development, so they've got some very preliminary ideas in mind, they haven't brought anything official to council yet or official to staff yet, but they're, they're working on it, it's just, you know, takes some time for these developments to occur. And then the piece to the very, um, I'm gonna go east of that, is actually owned by Lincoln West, and they just are holding that for future use by Lincoln West Ford, so, there's actually two pieces of land there.
Okay. There you go, Skip.
One more thing. Uh, the person who's in charge of the director of library and the person in charge of the family museum, you couldn't ask for better directors. I mean, they are gung ho. They've got people there that-
Lost.
I don't know how she finds it, boy, they are good. I mean, really good at their job, and that takes a lot. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Skip. Glad to see you up and around, we wish you the best. Thanks for the kudos to the staff, they don't hear it enough. Anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda? You can do so by approaching the podium in the back, please state your name and your address, we'd like to hear from you. Okay, well, close public requests of council, let's move to our presentation here on the receipt of our bids for our capital improvement projects for 2023. For that, we welcome our finance director, Jason Shat, and Elizabeth Bergman, a director with Baker Tilly. Elizabeth, thanks for making the trip, thank you for being here. Jason has to be here, it's part of his gig, so, you know, he, he doesn't get the big thanks for being here, but thank you for your work on this, Jason, and to the team. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor, and we're thrilled that Elizabeth can be here for a couple years, I think we were doing these remotely, so, um, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, um, I'm really pleased to present the, uh, the bond sale to you tonight. Um, I think we had, uh, one of our, our best, considering all things and, in the current environment, but I will turn it over to Elizabeth to share the details.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm really happy to be here, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, which is, I feel like every time I come, I've got good news, and you guys are so nice, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen when I don't have such good news, but, uh-
We won't invite you back.
So, let's keep that at bay. Yeah, absolutely, so, this morning at 10 o'clock, we sold 13.28 million dollars of bonds to finance the city's capital improvement plan, and I will tell you that you got nine bids, which is a tremendous amount of bids, and I looked back, we have records going back to the early 90s, only twice have you received that many bids, in 2014 and 1997, you also received nine bids, never, never more, so, at the top of the game, Bettendorf is, uh, very interesting to the market. The good news is of those nine bids, your winning bidder was Hilltop Securities at 3.29%. There are two things that are pretty exciting about that. One is that you, the second highest bidder was also 392%. We had to go out to four decimal points in order to differentiate between the two, so the bids were all very tight, very competitive, indicating that you really got, um, a very good deal. It also bears noting that when we put together the bond deal in late November, our expectation was a interest rate of over 4%, so really what you got was almost 100 basis points higher, or lower, excuse me, than what we had anticipated. Some of that has to do with conservatism of structuring debt, not knowing which direction interest rates will go, but also in the last two months, interest rates have come down considerably, and, um, that plus a, a lot of interest in the bids was leading to a good result, so 3.29% and with $900,000 of premium. As part of the process, also, the Moody's rating was affirmed at a double A2, so it's a high-quality double A rating. The rating agency was very positive about the strong economy in the city and the healthy financial position. The debt is always the sticking point that they mentioned again. I also would be remiss if I didn't say what a spectacular job staff did presenting the city to the rating agencies, um, really strong presentations, conversation about upward movement on the rating. Unfortunately, the outcome was to maintain the rating at the same, same level, but there was a robust conversation along those lines. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for our team? No questions? Wow, you did an awesome job, Elizabeth.
Your Honor? Elizabeth, what was the ninth, uh, place bidder at, if you have that? Your Honor, Elizabeth, what was the ninth place bidder at, if you have that in front of you? Because I think this shows how strong this.
3, 3898.
Yeah, 3, 3, 8, 9, 8, so super, super close. In fact, the mothership back in St. Paul said, wow, I haven't seen a bid this close in a long time, so really a lot of interest in really tight bidding, so it also reflects, January's a great time to sell bids, bonds, excuse me, there's a lot of money that needs a place to find a home, and Jason and I have determined that we think January might be the sweet spot moving forward, so I think you'll see me here in the cold months moving forward.
Sorry about that, but you're welcome to come down.
It's warmer here than where I'm coming from.
You're coming from cold anyway.
Yeah, 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 no, you're not getting any complaints from me.
All right, we're glad you're here, thank you very much for being here. Any questions for Jason, other than thank you very much to all of you who had a hand in doing this great work? Other thoughts for Jason and the team? Okay.
Congratulations, that's what I, that's my thought.
Thank you, glad that you're here. Let's move to a resolution. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution determining the bid from Hilltop Securities Incorporated of Dallas, Texas, to be the best and most favorable bid received, and the general obligation bonds series 2023A be awarded at a final par amount as adjusted in the amount of $13,280,000 at a true interest rate of 3.3033798%, and the total purchase price is adjusted in the amount of $14,238,306.46. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, Michelle, with Lisa, any discussion?
No.
Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the work you all did, thank you very much, we appreciate you. Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title 8, Chapter 2, entitled Sewer Use and Service. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have a couple of second readings, the first of which is for Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title 10, Building and Development, Chapter 5, Mechanical Codes and Regulations with Amendments. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed that second reading, we move to our second, of which is for Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title 10, Building and Development, Chapter 6, Plumbing Codes and Regulations with Amendments. I move approval of this ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion on this second reading? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the second reading. Two, third, and final readings. Councilmember Saxer, you have the first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1, 322A2, vehicles entering stop intersection by adding a stop sign intersection on 16th Street at Brown Street. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Councilmember Baden, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title 11, Chapter 13, entitled Off-Street Parking and Loading. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.